All right, guys. Good evening, 7:00 PM. Today is the 3rd of August and welcome to the zoning commission meeting. We will start off with citizens to be heard. Yeah, I'll go citizens to be heard. Is there any citizens to be heard? I'm looking at the list. Everybody has appointed, basically put 4.1 as the only topic. Are there, there is a generic citizens to be heard that we have first? Mark, yes, sir.
Mr. Solis, could you announce the members of the commission present and declare there's a quorum present, please?
Can we take roll call?
Present.
Commissioner McCormick?
Present.
Commissioner Herman?
Present.
We have a quorum present. At this time, we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting. I'll have citizen comments. Is there anybody here to the generic title of citizen comments? See no citizen comments. We'll go straight into the approval of the consent agenda for the meeting of the minutes of July 6, 2021. I will take a motion for the minutes as read. Have a motion by Jackson, a second, Herndon, have a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, see, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you, sirs. Motion carries. We'll go into new business. New business is 4.1, a public hearing, the second one. On the rezoning of the RR Rural Residential Zoning District as described as a property located to the west, West Avenue North of the property occupied Benettonian High School and South and Northwest Military Highway, except one property located fronting on Northwest Military Highway and covered by two, 2021. Bear appraisal district property ID numbers 224-157, 224-158, 131-5232, 131-5231, and 355-184. And two, the West Oaks Plan Unit Development Area. At this time, we have a public hearing. We have citizens to be heard and we'll proceed with listening to our citizens.
Time is 7:03.
7:03, thank you very much. First one, Wayne Carter, please come forward, sir. Welcome back.
May I remove my mask?
Absolutely.
Good evening Chairman, members of the zoning commission. My name is Wayne Carter and I reside at 125 South Winston Lane. And I may have, in haste, I may have put my name down on 4.1, but the, you know, that's the right one, sorry.
Correct.
I read on the city's website today about the meeting and I reflected back when I saw about the 60 name residents of the petition that was originally submitted to you folks that was championed by my neighbor Steve Ackley and other members of our community. And I reflected back to 1998. Myself and God rest his soul, Bill Schultz on West Castle Lane helped me obtain 98 signatures in our community. All but one. And this was for the neighborhood protest or fight or whatever you want to call it for the 480 car church parking lot to be built on Winston Lane. And the one person that refused to sign it, an older gentleman, maybe probably my age now. He was a rancher also, and he said, Mr. Carter, I think that people should be able to do with their land what they want to. Well, being a younger gentleman, I respect my elders. And I said, yes, sir, that's true where your ranch is. But we have zoning laws, ordinances in our area and other areas of this country to help protect those that live there for any encroachment upon their normal way of carrying out their daily life in their neighborhood. Now, our area has had, I don't, I don't want to use the word onslaught, but we've had numerous attempts to change the character of our neighborhood, all of which have failed because we have community support. On one of the biggest, most attended city council member, I mean, city council meetings, I stood over there with 300 people here and I asked, is everyone in this audience for us? This chamber stood up. Again, that's the power of the people to try to convince those that have been elected or appointed to satisfactorily represent us. My parents moved to Winston Lane in 1946 when I was three years old. My mother wanted to be in a rural area. She wanted horses and chickens. What has changed in our area? The only thing that has changed in our area, two major, two major developments in our area, well, three. The Baptist Church grew from one room to a mega church. The McGimsey Whiteface Herford Ranch changed from a cattle ranch to the Boy Scouts. And the gravel pit down by Aggie Park changed into Antonian High School. What else has changed in our area? Nothing except for some folks want to change their land that they've either inherited or bought and changed it to something else than what we are petitioning for a change to keep this rural residential district intact. Thank you for your time and your volunteer service. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Barera.
It's good to see you again.
I'm doing great.
A little shorter than he is. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for allowing us to come and speak with you about the things that are important to us. I brought some slides since I'm a teacher presenter. I do that, but I also brought it in writing for those of you who are going to have to turn around and look backwards, so.
Thank you.
So I, I bought the property at 235 Fox Hall Lane about five, six years, five or six years ago. And I understand it had been vacant for some time prior to that, since the French's had passed away and their family had not sold the property. So I don't know what happened during that time, but after I bought it, I started seeing almost immediately, like within the first month I was in the property, we had a huge flood and water came into the house. I'm like, where's that water coming from? And then I asked the neighbors and they said, oh yeah, the French has always had trouble with that. So I want you to look at the map and my house, my property is the little orange block. That's kind of a Pentagon shaped. And I back up to something called West Oak Court. A property that was developed with 27 homes on it. And it's, if you look at the rest of our properties, it probably should have had four houses on it, maybe five. But what happens with that property is that it is solid concrete and there's nowhere for the water to go. So if you go to the second page, you can see what hap, I wish I had a picture of this, you know, 10 years ago when Mrs. French lived here. But consider that the asphalt, which is that gray, keeps running down the hill. And we filled it in with, first with dirt to fill up the holes so I could drive on it because there were exposed rocks and exposed roots. And then, and that ran down the hill the next time it rained. And then we tried crushed granite and crushed it and packed it and it still ran down the hill. And then we finally started thinking about something more permanent, which I don't think that I can do 500 yards worth of concrete on there. So I need to find some simple way of protecting my driveway. And you can look at all these pictures, they're completely deteriorated, mostly in the last three years in these heavy rains that we've had. And the very last photo I want to show you is what, is what the folks behind me have done. All along the fence line, people have cut squares into the fence so that the water drains from their solid concrete neighborhood into my yard and then runs down my hill, down my driveway and across the street into my neighbor's property. That's why we need to have a rural residential zoning for this piece of property. And I will tell you that all of my neighbors, even though those who are not here today, we've had lots of talks about this, they're all concerned about the density of, of construction. When you put that many homes into property that is really rural and we do not have sewer, we do not have a sewer system that catches water when it rains. There, there's nowhere for this water to go. It just floods and, and it takes with it plants, rocks, trash in your yard, whatever. So I highly, highly, you know, recommend that we, that we pass this ordinance to create a rural residential zoning district. And, and, and any questions you might have, I mean, please, this is a serious, this is serious business for our property owners. And we'd really like to retain the ruralness of this property and especially the density of population has got to be controlled. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Ackley. Welcome back, sir.
Stephen Ackley, 0118 West Castle Lane. And I think you can see from the testimony tonight that we're, we have many citizens are in favor of, of this. We've started to recirculate the petition with the exact numbers on there, which we'll present at the city council meeting next week. It has the boundaries as, as laid out in the, in the public hearing recommendation that we're discussing for the rural residential district. Among those are people that have not been contacted before on Danny Lane and, and other places. And they are all in favor of it. I think from the notices that were sent out and as well, we sent out an information sheet to about 76 of our, our neighbors. And all of them have indicated the strong support for this, for this ordinance. And I'd just like to express my own appreciation for the zoning commissions hearing us and, and letting us have our say on this and to see the merits of, of preserving this area. I think it's a step forward for Castle Hills.
How many meetings is this complete for us, sir? How many meetings do you remember?
This is our 12th meeting.
Our 12th meeting, that's exactly what I thought you were to say. Mr. Baker, sir.
Good evening, Quentin Baker, 213 Hibiscus Lane. Want to reiterate my support for the rural residential district. I won't go back through all the presentations of before, just, just know, we strongly support it. I do want to point out a, an issue that was raised at the last public hearing that I think does need to be addressed. Zach Zurich, who is here today, bought the property at 218 Hibiscus. And he presented the last time an issue where he would like to construct a house on that property. It is less than the three quarters acre and that creates an issue where he may have to get a variance in order to build a house on his property. We certainly never intended to limit anyone that has a property less than three quarters an acre from enjoying the use of their property. So there's, there's a gap here that needs to be filled.
Are you proposing language for that?
I'm sorry?
Are you proposing any language for that?
I don't have any language to propose. I, I think Mr. Small is by far the best one to do this. The, the concept that we talked about before in these meetings is to basically grandfather any properties that are less than three quarters acre. So they're not subjected to the restrictions of the rural residential district. So that way, if somebody wanted to build a house, they wouldn't need a variance to build a house on their property. So I'm, as a citizen, I can't ask Mr. Small to do the, the work, but I, I think he's by far the best one to propose a solution to most elegantly fix this issue. So our citizens don't need a variance to build a house on their property.
Chairman, Mr. Small is very aware and we can obviously cover that in 4.2. He has a response prepared.
That's great.
I just want to make sure, articulate to me exactly what the issue is that he, we're going to address.
Okay. For existing lots, less than three quarters acre. Once the rural residential district is in play, why they would need a zoning variance in order to build a house on their property, because it would be a non-conforming property, just being a vacant, vacant lot.
So the proponents for this understand that there are going to be some citizens, some residents who are already presently below that or potentially could buy that and have that issue to overcome.
That's correct.
And you're comfortable with that?
I'm supportive of that. I don't want to deny any property owner the right to enjoy building a house on their property. The fact that it's already less than three quarter acres, well, that's a fact, okay? Now subdividing that property is down less than that in the future. Why, we want to keep it large acreage and, and attracts, but something that already exists that's less than three quarter acres, that's another matter.
But we also acknowledge the checks and balances, which is the board of adjustment. Correct? So a person can't come forward and say, you know what, I want to petition, I want to go over here. And that would be a battle in itself, right? I mean, not a battle, but just a, a extra hurdle that somebody, because this is now in place, would have to overcome. Now, although one can conceive it as a burden, it really isn't. It's just an extra step that we're going for the protection of the community that they would have to go through.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but if we can avoid that so that those citizens aren't concerned that adopting the rural residential district will restrict them, why, I'm in favor of, of us protecting those landowners.
And, and in essence, that's part of what we're doing this in the first place, right? Is to, to reduce the opportunity for them to subdivide and do a whole bunch of different things. They're going to have to come through that hurdle.
I appreciate the process. It brought the light to this issue and hopefully we can correct it.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
This is Baker.
Hello again.
How are you?
Jana Baker, 213 Hibiscus Lane. I was cleaning out my desk the other day and I found an interesting report. It was from August 2016 and I've given you all a copy of it. It's the, from San Antonio Councilman Joe Crier for Council District Nine. And it was titled Official Report on Flooding and Drainage in This District. And I'm going to read some sections from it because I think that they're important to the rural residential district because they address flooding, drainage and inappropriate development. And I think that the article that was written or the report that was written in 26, 2016 is important for the entire community, as are the aspects of the rural residential district. Because primarily, they're not just an aesthetic. They address flooding, traffic, all the things that our area is lacking in infrastructure. So Councilman Crier appointed a committee to examine flooding and poor drainage conditions. And two of these areas were in Castle Hills. One was the Meritage Construction Site, which I think the city is already addressing. It flooded Manton. And the other one was flooding that occurred on Carrollwood. And the executive summary cited these things and highlighted them. Resolution of the two Castle Hills problems will require a cooperative effort by all parties involved. On the Castle Hill side, thought should be given to redesigning Manton Street, possibly slightly widening the street and building a larger, more effective culvert or viaduct. So whatever rainwater is not stopped on the San Antonio side can be more effectively channeled onto the Castle Hill side. On the San Antonio side, measures must be taken to correct an egregious design flaw that causes water to bypass Meritage Catch Basin and spill onto property owners at lower levels. Meritage must agree to control and more effectively correct their drainage problems. Not least, both San Antonio and Castle Hills must review their existing codes governing new construction of streets, housing, and make clear provisions for the intelligent handling of rainwater. There is no excuse whatsoever for clear cutting of new construction sites and callous disregard for natural drainage patterns. Use of materials that reduce stormwater, better water handling methods and specific types of water absorbing plants were also addressed in this report. At a bare minimum, code must be redrafted and practices such as clear cutting, bulldozing and the intentional bypassing of catch basins made illegal. In particular, parking lots must henceforth be made using permeable materials and better techniques incorporating ideas from SA Tomorrow. Code inspectors in both cities must crack down on builders who disregard or violate codes. Fines should be heavy and building permits yanked for those who violate code. Moreover, persons guilty of illegal dumping must be arrested and severely punished to include jail time. City Code, which barely addressed the problem of flooding over 20 years ago, must be brought up to date to incorporate contemporary methods and technologies that mitigate water runoff. Had these techniques been a part of code in the years past, we would not have many of the flooding problems that plague us now. Nor would the citizens be required to spend millions of tax dollars correcting egregious mistakes and some intentional invasions in handling of stormwater made by developers in past years. Not least, San Antonio and Castle Hills must review their existing codes governing new construction of streets. This is a reiteration. And housing and make clear provision for the intelligent handling of wet rainwater. There is no excuse whatsoever for clear cutting of new construction sites and callous disregard for the natural drainage patterns. Although developers are not required to fix existing problems, they cannot make them worse as a result of their development. The purpose of the rural resident, this is me now, the purpose of the rural residential district is lots, is to keep the lot sizes. So, because there is no drainage, Overland Flow is the only drainage infrastructure that exists in our neighborhood where we're requesting a rural residential district. We cannot allow this area to be cut up too much more and allow more impervious cover to be added and compound the already existing water runoff issues. The rural residential district isn't just an aesthetics issue. It's an avoidance of damage and destruction from flooding, drainage and poor contractors. Cut nichey. Thank you very much. It's my opinion that, well, I hope that y'all will pass a rural residential district. And I, I agree with Quentin that we need to address the issue by having a grandfather clause to protect people like Zach. It was never the intent of the neighborhood to exclude him. We were welcoming to all our neighbors. And just to point out that if it doesn't happen, when we built on 27 acres, we had to get no less than 12 variances for things like where our front door was. Where's the front of our property? So it's not an impossibility. It's, it's not fun, but it can be done.
And one question before you leave, in reference to what you presented today, you feel that the, the RR Rural Residential District that we're, may approve today sufficiently addresses the concerns that you have?
I think it's a, it's a great step in mitigating future damage. Yes. What's done is done, but we can't allow it to continue to happen this way. The city can't afford it and I don't think the neighborhood can either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dick, Dickerson or Dixon? Thank you, sir. Zach Zurich. You're back.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time. I'll keep it brief. I, I really appreciate the Baker speaking up on behalf of me. It's a very neighborly gesture and really appreciate it. Appreciate it. So in terms of how to operate, I mean, obviously I'm going to come up here and parrot the request that I be grandfathered in. As far as I understand it, we're, this is a public hearing to figure out the, the placement of the map in some sort?
That is correct, the boundaries.
Okay. My proposal would be, I mean, just as it's listed on the agenda, as, as a potential option of, of, or means of grandfathering my property or those like it. You know, if after the, the 4.11 states except for properties and list the, the, the property ID according to Bear County Appraisal District. Well, the property ID here for 218 Hibiscus, it's 1339672. So maybe a comma at the end of that clause and this property or any others like it. As I referenced in the last meeting, I meant 0.7 acres for the lot. The one thing that is unique about the lot that I bring up for the committee's consideration is it's a, the flag lot. So it's got about a 200 foot entry into the, the greater portion of the lot. I've got no intention of subdividing it, but even from a practical standpoint, I think it would probably be highly impractical, if, if not nearly impossible to, to do any sort of subdivision of the, the particular lot that, that my wife and I purchased. Anyway, appreciate your time, appreciate your consideration. Again, bottom line, you know, if there's any way to exempt my particular lot from the rural residential district ordinance or, or mapping, I would greatly appreciate it. Otherwise, I'll, I'll give you the additional $400 for the board of adjustments and variance request. And I'll see the board of adjustment then.
Agreed. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody online that would like to speak in reference to that? And yes, sir, I'll get you in a second.
Sir, I have one resident that submitted an email.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes. Ms. Garcia. Oh, she said, she asked that we state that she supports the rural residential district and the proposed geographical boundaries of the area where the property is to be rezoned. Unfortunately, she was not able to attend this evening, but she wanted to make this known.
You're next. Come on up.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. I would have been at the last meeting, but I'm one of those people who got struck by lightning, which means that I had my vaccine and still got COVID. The, the idea of the rural district, I understand the whole purpose behind it. And it's not that I am against the rural district. Speaking, and I'm glad.
We need to state your name officially for the.
David Lewis, I'm at 212 Hibiscus. And, you know, I'm one of these notorious developers. The, the land that we developed for Mr. Zurich and, and Quentin bought one of the lots. And I have another client, Dr. Grunsberg, who's going to build a house also. We went through the extra doing stormwater research and everything else, which hasn't been done for a lot of these developments. But the new regs that we have cause you to spend another $5,000 to making sure that we do not cause any more problems for flooding. And, and so in particular case of Mr. Zurich's house, it, it's already been going through everything and it will not create any flooding. The thing that I mentioned before, and this is when our city attorney made a comment. I just don't want to see people having to go to the board of adjustments because the board of adjustments, you, you say, well, you can just go to the board of adjustments, but it's a super majority. It's a 75% that you have to have as, 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 you know, to make a change. And it's that way because you don't want to make changes. You know, you set up your zoning, you set up all your rules. And if someone comes before you, they really need to have a really special, what's called a hardship. It's a hardship of the land, not a hardship of the person. They can say, well, my mother really, she needs a place to live. I need more than 35% coverage. No, that's not what it is. It's about the land itself. So it is a very difficult task to get past the board of adjustments. And when I mentioned this last time, that I'd like to say a grandfather clause, it was brought up that, and they read the statute. The statute, they said that the board of adjustments may make exception, not will, but may. And there's a big difference legally in that. And I would hate to see any of my clients who bought land and that we went through all, everything that we needed to go through to make sure it was going to be proper and nearby approved. That have to go before the board of adjustments and find out that they can't do this and they can't do that. But what's worse than that, when I ran all the stats in Castle Hills of the number of houses with all these regulations that we're going to be putting. of the number of houses with all these regulations that we're going to be putting on the Board of, on the new rural district, about 80% of the houses failed. And that just means that 80% of the houses may very well have to go before the Board of Adjustments. And they may have to have then a super majority. And what usually happens at Board of Adjustment meetings and the ones that I've been through, and unfortunately, so probably 100 of them, is that the neighbors all come and they don't want a window here and they don't like the way the house looks. They don't like the color of the brick or they don't like any of these other things. And it no longer becomes just the Board of Adjustments making decisions on the law. It becomes kind of a, you know, well, will you change the window for this? Or will you change this room? Or will you do this? Or will you build a smaller house? And I've seen it, and that's my biggest complaint that I have. So when we talk about being able to exempt or have a grandfather clause, I really would like to see it be real. I mean, I was going to buy a property on the Hibiscus, I mean, excuse me, Fox Hall, and the house next door just been remodeled and they're within 20 feet. And if I was to put a garage, I would be within 20 feet. And as you go down the whole idea of the rural district, there's a lot of houses that are way close to property lines, so don't meet this, don't meet that. And I just didn't want to see that happen to my neighbors, period. I would love to see something be put into it saying that it really is a grandfather clause. And don't just sit there and say they can go before the Board of Adjustments because that's kind of a cop outs the way I look at it. Other than that, I think that the 0.75 acres and all these things are fine. The the we're here for the boundary. So the only thing I would say on the boundary is that the lots that are across from the school, that don't have any trees, that back up to power lines, that back up to the Boy Scout Park, they're not really the same as the lots on Fox Hall, lots on Hibiscus. We're trying to keep this to be this beautiful, which it is, and keeping the canopy and everything else, which right now, the way that it's written, you would actually have to cut a lot of that canopy down because of noncompliance. It's more, if when you when you look at, if you look at Hibiscus and you go down the road, the fire trucks can't go down there. So it's all noncompliance. And so if you don't do something about solving the canopy problem, then someone could say, hey, you cut it all down because it's not in compliance with what the rules are. But again, I that's just a side point. The the biggest thing is, is that I don't consider anything that is between East Castle Lane going towards Northwest Military with a lot of the commercial buildings that are there to really be part of what we're trying to accomplish with this. Other than that, I think everything else is. The 0.75 acres, really, we have a Bear County requirement of like 0.5 acres. And then if you take out, if you make it net, it's really a 0.56 acres. You can't get a septic system. So we already have some safeguards. But I'm not going to argue about any of that. I just want to try to make it to where my neighbors don't have to go before the Board of Adjustments and that they don't have to go through some of the things that I have gone through in my career as a builder have happened to them. And certainly, the lots that have been developed have gone through the strenuous city guidelines of drainage and everything else and have been approved. I hate to see them now have to go before the Board of Adjustments to be able to build a house on it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else scheduled would love to be able to speak on this subject? You're more than welcome while the public hearing is still available. Anybody online? Don't see any. Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm one of the houses that's kind of smaller than the 0.75. In a 0.75 acre. Um, so my concern is that the house burns down. You tell me I can't build it again. And then it's then it's worthless to me. That would be my concern. So I support some sort of grandfather fall so we can build it back where it was before. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll address that after we get out of this public hearing. Anybody else? Seeing though, then at 7:37, public hearing is closed and we'll move on to the next item, which is 4.2, discussion and possible action on Resolution 2021-08-03, a resolution of the Zoning Commission of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, recommending to the City Council the rezoning of the property located west of West Avenue, north of the property occupied by Antonian High School and south of Northwest Military Highway, except one, property located frontier on Northwest Military Highway and covered by 2021. Bear Appraisal District property ID numbers 224157, 224158, 1315232, 1315231, and 33 and 355184 and 2, the West Oaks Plan Unit Development Area. Gentlemen, I have, I'll need a motion to to get the discussion going so that we can have this discussion and finally put this to the next level.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Now, before we enter into discussion, I think it would be appropriate to hear what Mr. Schnell has to say about the the recommendation for a grandfather clause.
That's fair. Let me, let me, let me start that discussion. So first of all, I want to address, Mark, what you heard in reference to. Is there any possible language that you want to recommend? Or what are your, what are your thoughts in reference to the 0.75?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. McCormick. Let me start by making it clear what tonight is about and what item 4.1 was about, the public hearing, and what the item you're on now, 4.2 is about. It is not about creating the rural residential zoning district. This commission recommended to the City Council in January, and the City Council in January created the rural residential zoning district. It's done, and it includes various area and other requirements, including a minimum lot size of 0.75 of an acre for property within the RR Rural Residential Zoning District. You may recall that the petition presented by Dr. Ackley and Mr. Bella and others had suggested a minimum lot size of one acre for the rural residential district. And the Zoning Commission, I think, when the idea promoted primarily initially by Mr. McCormick, changed that and recommended a minimum lot size of three quarters of an acre, having taken into consideration various factors. But it's not about creating the rural residential district. This is also not about geographical boundaries per se because this commission in May made a recommendation to the City Council, which the City Council then agreed with in regard to the projected land eligible to be rezoned to become rezoned RR Rural Residential. Tonight's agenda items, 4.1, the public hearing, and 4.2, what we're on now, is about actually rezoning all the property west of West Avenue and south of Northwest Military and north of Antonian High School, with the exception of the five Bear Appraisal District account properties fronting on Northwest Military and the West Oaks Planned Unit Development Area. So this is about rezoning. The grandfather provision in the city's ordinance in Chapter 50, Section 6 of the zoning code says that a legal nonconforming use or structure is grandfathered. So to some of Mr. Lewis's comments, anyone who has a is currently using their property or has a structure on their property is grandfathered. That use can continue even if that lot size is less than 0.75, less than three quarters of an acre. So no one who has an existing home and living in their home is affected. Mr. Zurich is in a different situation because his statements at the prior public hearing on this item in July, he indicated that the lot was not occupied and that there weren't any buildings on the property. So the grandfather provision as currently in our city ordinance will not protect Mr. Zurich to the extent at all, frankly. So there are, I've identified four options that are available to a property owner in Mr. Zurich's position. These are not for action tonight because the agenda does not allow action tonight on anything other than a an action on what property to rezone. So of the ideas I'm going to 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 list in a moment, only one of them is something that the the zoning commission could consider doing tonight. But I don't have enough information to tell you whether it is legal to do that. The four options are at a future meeting with proper public notice to affected parties and and a notice of public hearing published in regard to a public hearing before the City Council. This commission could consider revising the minimum lot size in the RR Rural Residential District to reduce it from 0.75 of an acre to 0.70 or two thirds of an acre, 0.667 of an acre. If if this commission was so inclined to make that kind of a recommendation, that would alleviate and solve Mr. Zurich's problem if his property is zoned rural residential. And it might also alleviate problems for people we don't even know about right now, whose lot sizes are slightly under 0.75. The second option, as as both Ms. Baker and Mr. Lewis spoke to, is going before the Board of Adjustment. There is a a cost. It is a hurdle. But the Board of Adjustment has discretion to look at this and to make a decision. And and although Mr. Lewis is correct technically, Boards of Adjustment look to hardships. And and the rules are that it it it's a financial hardship doesn't count historically and that the hardship cannot be created by the property owner seeking the variance. Mr. Zurich, I think, can can meet most of the hurdles in that the the size of his lot was not of his creation. And so the Board of Adjustment approach may be a very viable approach for someone in Mr. Zurich's position. And and if his property is part of the rezoning group, you know, I would urge Mr. Zurich to discuss that option with the city manager. The third option is one that I do not have adequate information to recommend. That is to exclude, as Mr. Zurich asked, exclude his property from the rezoning package. And the difficulty with that is not only am I not sure I got the Bear Appraisal District account number, a property ID number downright, but more importantly, whether not rezoning the Zurich property would result in what is called spot zoning. And spot zoning is when a a a piece of property in in an area is singled out for different zoning treatment than the other properties in the same area. And and it is, there's there's case law that that spot zoning is illegal. And it's a it it's something I can't evaluate because I have not seen a map that shows me exactly where Mr. Zurich's lot is as compared to the other properties which are under active consideration this evening for rezoning to the RR District. Finally, the the other, the the other way to address this is to revise the text in Section 50-6 about grandfather. So that grandfathering could extend not just to an existing use or an existing building, but could extend to deal with a situation like Mr. Zurich's. Again, because we have not given public notice that this discussion by the commission or action by the commission might be taken on an amendment to Section 50-6. Beyond my comments, it is not appropriate and it would violate the Open Meetings Act if the commission had an extended discussion about that, unless the discussion was merely about placing a potential amendment to the grandfather Section 50-6 on a future ordinance of a future meeting of the Zoning Commission. And even that discussion should not be made into a motion or action because, again, the Open Meetings Act prohibits action to be taken on an item that has not been noticed properly and timely on an agenda to comply with the Open Meetings Act. I I hope, Mr. Chairman and other members of the commission, that these comments are helpful to you in your discussion of this issue.
Mr. Schnell? And they definitely were helpful in terms of being able to to refocus where this this what is before us today. And and as we look back at the work that has been done, as Dr. Ackley said earlier, our last 12 meetings, we have been able to look at different things as we go along. And it was a step-by-step process where we talked about what setbacks were, what was going to happen. And with that, and one of the things that I fully appreciate, which is interesting to me about anything with public policy, in particular the zoning, is that the placement of this RR at times, right, brought brought up and brings up different issues that we also have to address. It doesn't mean this is the be all end all into the story for the rural residential district. Obviously, as outlined by our city attorney, there may be some other items that we have to bring forth as a result of what we're doing today that we need to address, be it maybe the extension of what grandfather does mean or not mean, or even the changing, as we said, in terms of looking at what's going to happen with with the properties as we go forward. So I think what this is 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 not the end all of the story for the rural residential district. As we hopefully get this to the next level, is that we realize there are some things that need to be tweaked and understood and may require us to come back and change even the lot size that was outlined by the city attorney. But those would have to be styled differently. They would have to have different public hearings for us to implement. And so I think there it's it's fair for us to move forward. I do want to thank the community for bringing this forth in the first place. And I I think as we started looking over the years, as certainly when I was with the with with the other board, I forget, oh, it wasn't Board of Adjustment. I forgot what board it was on what we did basis, and we had to work on that. And and so understand the issues that have come forth for this community. Understand what this does is allows people to have a basis, a understanding of a footprint that people can then work off of to tweak, to enhance, to change as times evolve. And so I I think it's it's a heck of a first step. And I'd like to hear my commissioners. Let's start, Skip, your first thoughts, and then I'll also need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution as proposed. I think the issue with regard to the grandfathering is something that can be addressed separately and brought back at a future meeting. I think it's appropriate now to proceed forward and approve the resolution so that we can get these boundaries and block and certain restrictions in place rather than to postpone it yet again. A vote. I think we need to go ahead with the motion.
Let me stop you right there before you, so I have a motion. I need a second.
I second that.
Thank you, sir. I have a second. Mr. Herman, so we have a motion in a second. Skip, please finish out whatever thoughts you have in reference to this.
I agree with with the need for consideration of a a change to the grandfather clause or some means whereby to protect the rights and and property values of persons already in possession of property that may be in use and that may may be proposed for future use for residences. I think we need to address that at a future meeting.
Not a problem, sir. Commissioner Jackson, your thoughts?
I'll agree with Commissioner McCormick. I think that we need to address the grandfathering thing and get that taken care of because that's one of those things that comes under the taint ripe doctrine. And we can do that in the future, but it needs to be done. And uh, uh, we can do that in the future, but it needs to be done.
Appreciate the attorney in present. Mr. Herndon?
Well, I wanted to thank all of y'all for bringing a good argument this whole time and sticking with it. Uh, I am um as well for this, and I think that we should go forward with it. And uh, and has been brought up the uh, the grandfathering. I think that's. The, that's something that uh maybe wasn't clear in all of our minds as we went forward. And I think it's time we clear it up though, um, pretty soon and uh, and go forward with that, so. No worries yet. Thank you.
Mr. Herman, your thoughts?
Um, I really agree with all of the thoughts about the grandfathering in of properties that are existing. You know, I think some verbiage needs to be done. I don't want to produce or create any kind of onerous. Requirements on mark to uh put specific verbiage in for every single property. I think, you know, the spirit of the. Of the um, you know, the practice is to not subdivide the properties any further. And I think existing properties for property owners that have already purchased existing either lots or, you know, homes on these. And these districts need to be uh definitely protected, you know, in some way. Uh, without creating a list of every single property that that is affected by this rural residential district. I think it would be um, again, something for a future uh. Commission meeting to address that specifically and have any uh citizens come forward and. You know, uh, voice their opinions or objections to whatever it is, but uh, I definitely think we should do that at some point in the near future.
Thank you, sir. I think one of the things that that I learned that when I was a state representative was intent. And and intent, when you pass laws and public policy. I would tell you, I I fully for day one understood the intent of the community, what they wanted to get done. And I think to Mr. Herndon's point, it has stayed consistent. It's about completing the, the protection of the ambiance that is what we have so special. Here in Castle Hills. One of the things that we'll tell you that that we will have to do once we approve this. Is we'll give direction to city manager to look back at the grandfather as well as the acreage size uh and come back. My expectation is that you in this community, you that have championed this, sit with us one more time. And find a solution that is viable for everybody. We need to make sure that we reach that. So we've had our discussion. I don't see any more discussion. Um, all those in favor of the resolution, should I read it again or you already got it? I will read it one more time. Resolution of the zoning commission for the City of Castle Hills, Texas. Recommending to the City Council the rezoning of the property located west of West Avenue, north of the property occupied. By Antonian High School and south of Northwest Highway, military uh, high, Northwest Military Highway, except. One, property located fronting on Northwest Military Highway and covered by twenty twenty-one bear appraisal district. Property ID numbers two, two, four, one, five, seven, two, two, four, one, five, eight. One, three, one, five, two, three, two, one, three, one, five, two, three, one. And three, five, five, one, eight, four, and two, the West Oaks Plan Unit Development Area. We had a motion in a second. Commissioners, all for, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Um, the resolution has passed. Congratulations. Uh, and Mr., I would entertain a motion, Mr. Jackson, to give.
Chairman, just for the record, this will be presented to City Council next Tuesday night.
Next Tuesday night, we'll be back, once again, to go back to City Council. Um, but they meet at six thirty. We need to change. That's something else I want to address, guys. There's two things. One. Let's give direction to the city manager. You want to make a motion, Mr. Jackson? Or do you need a motion?
Well, it's not on the agenda.
Oh, that's true. All right. We'll just give you direction that we expect to see something back in the future. Uh, and then second, I I'd like to see in in the future us look, moving our meeting up to six thirty, like the council. Those doesn't wait until seven, but we'll see.
I think that's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
I like that decision, Skip. Let me see about that. So all those, uh, I think we have a dead, met all our agenda items. I want to thank everybody once again for being here. It is seven fifty-seven. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Jackson, second by McCormick to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Congratulations.